Twenty twenty four, this is the Carney Board of Alderman meeting. Call and meeting order. Please stand for the pleasurable agents.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sunday, have you had a chance to take role?
I've taken role. Everyone is present. You have the form.
Great, thank you. We'll move on to personal appearances this evening. Tonight, we have employee special recognition. We have several members of our police department here that are going to receive recognition for promotions to sergeant and corporal. I will turn it over to Chief Thomas.
Thank you, Mayor, Board of Aldermen. Really happy to announce a couple of promotions that we had. We just went through a pretty extensive promotion process. I won't go into all the great details. Suffice it to say, we stressed these guys out pretty good, and they came through with shining colors. Two of the notable people that were missing, one is Jeff Parton. He's our canine handler. He's in Columbia on his last week of getting our canine Havik certified. Havik has passed all of his tests and certifications and everything. So he kind of got promoted as well. We'll throw him in the bus. We're gonna have them come up in another week or two and show you all our new dog. He's not a cuddler, but he's a really good dog. So. The other one is David Parker. He's one of our new corporals on the night shift, and he sent me a message today. And he has four kids under five, I think. And he didn't get any sleep in before he went in last night, and they decided to keep him up all day today. So he said he was exhausted and didn't feel safe behind the car, so we'll get him back in one of these days. I've been where he's at. It's not fun. Our first promotion, where's he at? Charles, is our sergeant, new sergeant, Charles Leach, is right here. Charles is on day shift, and we're happy to have him as our new sergeant. Our next promotion is our detective corporal who got promoted to corporal, Ms. Blake Westerfield. Here. And I don't see Austin Dotson. He's on duty right now. Sorry?
He's on duty right now.
He's on? Okay, probably busy. Austin Dotson is our other night shift corporal. Mark Taylor is right here. He's a, by the way, he's a new daddy, so we gotta give him a double. Beautiful baby one. His first name is Mark. My name is Mark. I suggested Mark for the daddy. It didn't work out. Phil Lamont is our other corporal, brand new corporal on day shift. So we'd like to congratulate all of them. Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. Congratulations, gentlemen, to your promotions and your respective positions. So I appreciate the service you provide, the residents and business owners and our visitors. So thank you for being here. I'm sure you all would love to stay for the rest of the meeting, but if you have other things to do or work to do, now's a good time to excuse yourself. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, sir.
Yep, thank you. We'll move on to public hearings. We do have a public hearing notice this evening, a public hearing to receive public comments regarding proposed text amendments to the municipal code, including Chapter 405 zoning regulations to add an alternative development standard review process, and Chapter 410 subdivision regulations to add a development review committee process, update subdivision application fees into modify preliminary plat content requirements and other changes. So at this time, if you would wish to speak for or against the proposed changes, I'll ask you to move forward to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Floor is open for public comment or input. Seeing nobody move, I will close the floor. Any items of discussion from the board? All right. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Any questions or items of discussion on the consent agenda this evening? Seeing none, if we can entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Still moved? A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Consent agenda passes as presented. We'll move on to ordinances. The first ordinance this evening, a motion approving bill number thirty-three twenty twenty-four. I am gonna ask the board if we could entertain a motion to postpone this ordinance consideration to our next regular scheduled meeting, September third, twenty twenty-four. I asked the staff to send out letters today to all the builders that this would affect and to give them, the builders, opportunity to share their thoughts and concerns on the proposed changes. I just thought that was a more transparent way of handling the process. Those letters did go out today, and so to where I don't anticipate any builders taking issue or concerns with this proposed update. I felt like it was right to give them the opportunity to share their thoughts. So if anybody, if we could entertain a motion to postpone bill number thirty-three twenty twenty-four consideration into September third meeting.
Make a first motion.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Next item under ordinances is a motion approving bill number thirty-four twenty twenty-four, presented by Shelley Daniel, our Public Works Director, an ordinance approving the Missouri Highway and Transportation Committee, I'm sorry, Commission, rather, Strategic Highway Safety Plan Program Agreement. Shelley, you got the floor?
Thank you, Mayor. We had applied to get funding to purchase equipment to improve our pedestrian crossings. On our request, we were awarded ten thousand dollars to go towards rapid flash beacons, which we have some of those throughout the city. So this money will be used to help purchase two of those and that we hope to install on Meadowbrook where the trail crosses.
Any questions from the board on staff on the proposed ordinance? Seeing none, if we could read the proposed ordinance first, reading by title only, please.
An ordinance approving the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission Strategic Highway Safety Plan Program Agreement.
Make a motion to approve on first reading?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Second reading by title only, please.
An ordinance approving the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission Strategic Highway Safety Plan Program Agreement.
Motion to approve.
A second. Pull the board, please.
Alderwoman Barker?
Aye.
Alderman Lehman?
Aye.
Alderman Holt?
Aye.
Alderman King?
Aye.
Votes unanimous, and ordinance passes on the second reading. Next item is a motion approving bill number thirty-five twenty twenty-four, presented by David Pavlich, our Community Development Director, an ordinance approving a right-of-way use agreement with United Fiber LLC. David?
Yeah, I got a few comments. United Fiber proposes to utilize our right-of-way extend fiber services throughout a lot of Carney. They'll be in the north part, north of Ninety-two Highway, up and south of Ninety-two Highway, west of the railroad tracks, so Shatterbrook and Regency Drive, Davidhoods. We require a right-of-way use agreement for any utility company that proposes to use our right-of-ways as part of that. You know, they agree to maintain insurance. They'll be a good user, protect our right-of-ways, and then also they will obtain right-of-way permits for any work that they do on our right-of-ways. Joe Hagaman is here, or several other members of United. I see a selling rink, or a selling rink construction, and they'll be a subcontractor for them, and they will do the load gates and the installation over the next few months. It's a pretty, pretty quick timeline. They propose to maybe be in within the next hundred and twenty days or so, three months? Hundred and twenty days?
Yeah. We actually envision the whole project to take about a hundred and eighty days.
That's impressive.
So the right-of-way use agreement is the first step. As they progress through the city, they'll pull right-of-way permits for the work that they do.
So if I hear this correctly, they're only gonna be going into Ward One? They're not gonna get service to the high school and Southview and all them over there?
Well, Intercept Fiber is also in town. They came up from the south. We approved that a couple of years ago, so they started it out with an installation in Greenfield. They are over at the high school.
Yeah, it sounds like they're going.
They're over at the high school, I believe. They'll be.
So they're not overlap?
Went to Brookhaven. They actually contacted me last week and said that they were on plans. They haven't submitted them yet, but they will, the whole middle of town is, doesn't have fiber. They will extend to the middle of town. So all of Carney.
But to answer your question.
Pretty much all of Carney.
United, under Servaree in Ward One, and Intercepts in Ward Two. Only question, a little overlap. My only question for staff is, this appears to be the same exact agreement we approved for Intercept a couple of years ago. To where I appreciate the fast install in and out. What does that look like for our right-of-ways? I mean, just, you know, if there's a sinkhole or an issue calls from the ditch witching, like, is there a time period that we have to?
The ordinance requires some warranty period where they have to come back.
What is that? Can you remind me?
I wanna say it's two years.
Okay.
It might be up to four.
It is twenty-four months. However, we are a local company. We never know when. So we maintain our right-of-ways continuously.
Okay.
Our, our local office is in Savannah, but we also maintain offices in Smithville and Excelsior, so we have a local presence, so we will maintain.
We've got plenty of beautiful office space available in Carney, too. Any other questions from the board?
My hope, my hope is that they treat the city of Carney like Intercept has. Intercept periodically, I would get phone calls from neighbors, hey, they're tearing up my yard or doing this or that. I gave them Kevin's phone number. I never heard from anybody again. So they've done a really good job of installing. We hope that United has, too. We've heard good things from other communities, too. We've not heard bad things, so we're hopeful that we get the same treatment of United.
Yeah, I'm sure we will.
Is it appropriate for me to, to explain our process?
Sure. Yeah, absolutely. You can have the floor, sir.
Prior to our construction process, we actually door-hang tags on every hall, explaining our process, and that door tag has the local number of this gentleman right here. So any questions or any damage, he gets the phone call. So it doesn't go into the city hall. So any restoration issues, goes to him. And if it doesn't go to him, it comes to me. So if I get the call, it goes to him. So he's responsible for restoration. So we maintain restoration. I mean, everybody breaks something. You don't, you don't make an omelet without breaking an egg. I mean, everything is, you know, you're gonna tear some stuff up, but we do restore it. So we're a, we're a local company. We've got a long-term presence. As David said, we're around all the time, so we have a presence in all the communities. You know, we're not like a nationwide company that, you know, we're only here once a month. We're always here, so.
Great.
We had, staff had a meeting with them a couple of weeks ago, and there were six representatives here. One of those was, was a phone number that I got, and I'm pretty confident if I called him that, that things would get straightened up pretty quick. My first stop would probably be Joe. Be fine.
Are there any other questions from the board on the proposed ordinance?
Isn't, isn't your organization tied to the Electric Co-op?
We, we are actually a subsidiary of United Electric Co-op.
Okay. I've heard a lot of good things about them. I thought that was the same ones, so.
If there's no other questions from the board or comments from staff, if we could read the proposed ordinance by title only, for the first reading, please.
An ordinance approving a rights-of-way use agreement with United Fiber LLC.
Make a motion to approve.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Second reading by title only, please.
An ordinance approving a rights-of-way use agreement with United Fiber LLC.
Get approved on the second reading?
A second. Pull the board, please.
Alderman Lehman?
Aye.
Alderman Holt?
Aye.
Alderman King?
Aye.
Alderwoman Barker?
Aye.
Votes unanimous, and ordinance passes on the second reading. Welcome to Carney. Yes. Next item is a motion approving bill number thirty-six twenty twenty-four, presented by Sheila Ernstin, our City Administrator, an ordinance approving the School Resource Officer Memorandum of Understanding between the Carney School District and the City of Carney, Missouri.
The agreement in front of you will transfer, first of all, the school board is going to be voting on this later this week. This would add a new SRO position to the school district. They have an SPO currently, and, and they would retain that employee. The, the Police Department would, this new SRO will work and be supervised by the Police Department. And so it will be a city employee that helps us maintain our insurance and keep, keep our insurance company happy. There is a reimbursement agreement that has been determined in a reimbursement formula. And so what will happen is the school district, once a year, we will bill them for the salaries and benefits costs, and they will reimburse a portion. How that will work is it will be a portion based on the number of days that the employee works for the school district versus the number of, versus the number of days that the employee works throughout the year. So we will not be counting vacations. We won't be counting holidays, and that is how the school district will, will be handling that, so.
Any questions from the board on the proposed ordinance?
As a, as a city employee of the Police Department, then is that person would still be available to fill in shifts for this, for the police if we need that?
The, the MOU states, and this was a very big concern for the school district, they wanted to make sure that the police officer would be in the school district, or at a school on campus unless there is an emergency situation. And then if there's an emergency situation someplace in the city, yes. If the SRO has to be on vacation or gone, we are responsible for making sure that somebody still is at school. And so that's part of that, this agreement.
Chief Thomas, do you have anything to add to that?
No, sir. We're looking forward to it.
If there's no other questions from the board or nothing additional report from the staff, if we could read the proposed ordinance first time by title only, please.
An ordinance approving the School Resource Officer Memorandum of Understanding between the Carney School District and the City of Carney, Missouri.
Get approved on the first reading?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Second reading by title only, please.
An ordinance approving the School Resource Officer Memorandum of Understanding between the Carney School District and the City of Carney, Missouri.
Make a motion to approve?
A second.
Pull the board, please.
Alderman Holt?
Aye.
Alderman King?
Aye.
Alderwoman Barker?
Aye.
Alderman Lehman?
Votes unanimous, and ordinance passes on the second reading. Next item is motion approving bill number thirty-seven twenty twenty-four, presented by David Pavlich, our Community Development Director, an ordinance amending Chapter 405 zoning regulations and Chapter 410 subdivision regulations of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Carney, Missouri. That's what we had our public hearing on this evening. Do you have anything else to add?
We did the same thing in the planning zoning commission meeting. We didn't have public comments either. Just comments to add, one, we'd want to find fours or fives, the zoning ordinance, to add an alternative development standard process. Those who would help us if we have a project that proposes maybe a modification or minimum design standards that is equal to or better, but doesn't necessarily meet the strict language in our codes. So we think it'll help at some point in the future. And then on the 410 subdivision regulations, proposed modifications to the submittal requirements, plat content requirements, application fees, and then a clarification on the buffer strips for that you back up to public streets.
Alderman Barker, do you have anything else to add to that as our names up?
No, I don't.
Okay. If there's nothing additional, if we could read the proposed ordinance first reading by title only, please.
An ordinance amending Chapter 405 zoning regulations and Chapter 410 subdivision regulations of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Carney, Missouri.
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Second reading by title only, please.
An ordinance amending Chapter 405 zoning regulations and Chapter 410 subdivision regulations of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Carney, Missouri.
Make a motion to approve on second reading?
Second. Pull the board, please.
Alderman King?
Aye.
Alderwoman Barker?
Aye.
Alderman Lehman?
Aye.
Alderman Holt?
Aye.
Votes unanimous, and ordinance passes on the second reading. Next item is, we'll move on to resolutions. We have a motion approving resolution fifty-two twenty twenty-four, presented by Sheila Ernstin, our City Administrator, a resolution approving an addendum to the Municipal Materials Management Agreement between the City of Carney, Missouri, and Allied Services LLC, doing business as Republic Services of Kansas City.
This resolution would amend the contract to move up the end date of the current contract to December thirty-first of twenty twenty-four. And the plan would be, if this is approved tonight, that we would post bid notices to get proposals to try to hire a new contractor or the same contractor based on the best prices and the best services, and have that contract in place in time for the new contract to start on January first.
Any questions or items of discussion from the board on the proposed resolution?
If, if we do wind up going to contractor, is this a different contractor? Does this allow us to, for the exchange of the carts in time so that we don't have a disruption of service?
The, in the bid documents, the new contractor would be required to deliver carts by January first.
Okay. I think I understand what you're trying to get at there, Alderman Lehman, is residents are paying for sub park service now, but if we make a change, there could still be a few little hiccups in the process, so.
Anytime you change companies, there's potential for hiccups, but as long as we have carts here.
Are we gonna have the extra carts?
In the RFP that is ready to go, I asked that they, that they would be delivered to us to distribute for replacements or new residents.
Or if somebody wants an extra one?
But the company would initially distribute the initial.
Correct.
Okay. And it would be up to Republic if they would no longer be a provider to pick up the old carts?
Right.
If there's no other items of discussion, if we could entertain a motion approving resolution, approving an addendum to the Municipal Materials Management Agreement between the City of Carney, Missouri, and Allied Services LLC, doing business as Republic Services of Kansas City.
Make a motion to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Resolution passes. Next, we'll move to items for review and presentation. First item this evening is our July monthly financial presentation, presented by Stephanie Harris, our Finance Director. Stephanie?
Um, we are tracking right along on our financials in almost all areas. Any, any area pretty much out of whack is for places where we either make semi-annual payments or we make one-time-a-year contributions. So that throws, for timing reasons, throws our percentage of where we're at in the year. Makes it look a little higher than it should be, but all explainable, all, everything else looks really good. Nothing stands out. We're thirty-three percent through the year, so I don't know if you guys saw anything? Have any questions?
Are there any questions, comments from the board on the financial report for the month ending in July? Thank you for your report. Oh, sorry, Alderman King? You good? All right.
If you do, just call.
Great, thank you. The next item is proposed City of Carney Fairview Cemetery Rules and Regulations, presented by Eric Marshall, our Parks and Recreation Director. Eric, you got the floor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is just a draft that myself, Ryan Marcock, Ray Kendall, and Marcos Barrosa, our cemetery septum, we receive different cemetery signs that way we can look over and see what other communities are doing as far as their rules and regulations for their cemetery. We don't have a sign at Fairview Cemetery at the present moment, and our rules and regulations, I don't think, in, looked at for a very long time. Excelsior Springs came over, and we met up in the cemetery and walked through, and, you know, they saw some things as we have talked about already, but the arrangement we came up with was all four of us looking at this draft and didn't know if you would have any changes, and if so, please get back with us on what you, you might think. But some of these duplicate what other people have, some are combined on what other communities have, so it's not so wordy and not so long. Our cemetery sign, we think, and rules will be a good start. That way people know what they can and cannot do, because it's just been basically a free-for-all at Fairview Cemetery on, on what they're doing, and it makes it hard for maintenance and things of that nature. So that's what I have.
Marcos, do you have anything you want to add?
No, I mean, I just, I'm looking forward to getting everything all nice and good and forming, making a beautiful place for everybody to be. So just any questions, I figured, be good for you guys to ask, so.
Okay, well, thank you for being here. Any questions or items of discussion from the board? We'll make sure that if there's anything that comes up, Eric, we'll get with you.
Thank you, sir. We'll move on to Mayor's Communications. The only item I want to mention this evening is I was contacted by Russ Quinn. He is a Carney resident and business owner with a desire to establish like an arts council here in Carney. He brought up what the City of Liberty's doing with metal art and sculptures throughout the community. He mentioned specifically our roundabouts, and I wanted to mention to the board to get the board's thoughts, I will be considering establishing some sort of arts council or, or committee for the city and look at opportunities for us to possibly look at adding some art to some of the roundabouts or enhancing some of those areas. I did let Mr. Quinn know that Hallmark, I believe, donated a couple hundred thousand dollars to Liberty's budget, which allowed him to purchase all that art, that we, we don't have that luxury in our budget, but I do think it's something worthwhile, and anytime we have a resident that's willing to get involved and lead something, I think that's a positive. So more to come on that. I don't have anything further to add or communicate under my communications this evening, so I'll move on to the City Administrator's report.
I'd like to let Eric make an announcement about the park.
Thank you. Labor Day, September second, will be the last day of operation for the splash park for the, for the season. We will close down at eight P.M. And then, following the next day, September third, as of right now, it is scheduled for the new playground surfacing. That project is scheduled, again, to start September third. We will start by removing the old wood fiber mulch playground chips, get all of that removed, and what, what is good that we can reuse, we will take that out to Jesse James Park, and the old that's lower in the ground, we will take that out to the compost site. And then after that, the new playground surfacing will be installed.
That's great. That's exciting. I, gonna make that playground so much more inclusive for, for children with stool chairs and so much safer in general, so it's.
How long will the park be closed?
They're saying a week to ten days. Usually it's a week with just going in and putting down the new surfacing, but I guess they'd, our park department will be having trucks out there, because they'll have to take out all the playground surfacing in and around all of the playground, get it down to bare dirt, and then they'll pour that aggregate down. to bare dirt, and then they'll pour that aggregate down, and on top of that, then they'll pour the rubberized surfacing. So, and that has to cure at least 72 hours. The last day that they put it down, it has to cure 72 hours before anyone can get on it. So that'll be closed off, and that'll be around the clock. So Ryan and I have talked about already being out there overnight, so nothing gets, no people after, after dark will be walking on that surface.
Are you going to winterize that before they do that, or after?
Pardon me?
Are you going to winterize the park before they, they change that, or after?
Well, we'll winterize the splash park, we can just shut that off, and then we'll winterize that itself, but the actual playground surfacing can go on September 3rd.
Okay, so that's not going to be in between? I didn't know we're, okay, cool.
One more data question, will you give me an update on the play equipment that's boarded off?
Absolutely. We did an independent audit and had PlayCraft come in for the day, and they saw the same issues that we did. They have sent some new parts for that, and we are in discussion with them, because we don't think it's a design flaw. We don't think that the city should have to pay for that, so we've sent an email to them who's responsible for the installation. We're not playground installers, so we're hashing that out right now, but hopefully we can get it done. And the thing of it is, is we'll have playground mats, say the surfacing goes in first before they can come up here. The playground mats can sit on top of the surface after it's cured, and it won't damage that to get the playground taken care of. But right now, it's still boarded off because of the safety fact.
Okay.
We'd rather be safe than something happen.
Yeah, you always have to err on the side of caution when it comes to safety.
Right.
Do you have any idea of the cost estimation on getting that, the install for the faulty piece? Because ideally, it would be great, why the park shut down?
Yep.
To get that all done at the same time?
Right, that's what we'd like to do, and the email Ryan was out today. He was homesick, but I know he sent the email off to them at my request to find out what's the situation, how can we remedy this situation? Because Ryan and I said, we can't take that apart, and then it goes back wrong, then we're on our own.
Right.
One more thing, after they do Lions Park, they will immediately go out to Mac Porter Park and do the same thing, take out the old playground mulch and do the installation at that park as well.
Great, thank you.
Do we need temporary fencing around that while?
They're, they're responsible, the company.
They will.
They are in charge of having to call the Missouri Daylight and do the barrier construction fence, or however they do to block that area off.
The only other thing I have is that our next regular meeting will be on Tuesday night, September 3rd, after Labor Day.
We'll go on to Alderman Discussion. Alderman King?
I got nothing.
Alderman Holt?
Tomorrow is the start of school, and it gets kind of crazy around here, so everybody make sure and pay attention, because there's going to be a lot of young drivers who don't. I live over by the high school and I see it firsthand, so trust me, I, if we can be the adults in the room when sometimes kids can't, make sure everybody's safe tomorrow. There will be, school buses out and about, and you're going to see, traffic's going to be a little, little crazy for the first month or so. So just have some patience with, with everybody, we can get through it. We do this every year, but every year we have crashes, it's kind of crazy. So I just want to remind that to everybody. That's all I got.
Alderman Lehman?
Just wanted to welcome United Fiber to the north and west side of town, I'll put it that way. And hopefully we see Intercept coming through. I know I've had discussions with them in Ward 2. It's, there's a lot of people that, that desire high-speed fiber.
You do.
And Carney's not a little cowtown that it used to be, and so we, our citizens deserve to have high-speed fiber, so congratulations. That's all I have.
Alderman Barker?
I don't have anything to say.
All right. With that then, if we could entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting this evening?
So.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Everybody have a good evening, thank you for being here.